County Regional Plant Commission, the old chief. Would you stand with me, I'll lead the prayer and then Pettis would you lead the pledge. Bow with me, please.
Heavenly Father, we again thank you for this day and thank you for the blessings and opportunities you've given us and thank you to serve our fellow man and we pray Heavenly Father that what we do and what we say tonight will be pleasing and in harmony with thy will. And we pray Heavenly Father especially for those that are protecting us and the loss of life and the tragic major loss of life yesterday, we pray for these families and those that have lost before, we just pray that you'll continue to strengthen these families that only you can, Heavenly Father, we just continue to pray for that and we pray for our country and we pray Heavenly Father that you'll continue to strengthen her and let her be the great country that she is and continue to be that and we pray that you just be with us tonight, in Christ's name we pray, amen.
Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the light of the United States of America and to the republic which sustains, one nation, one God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
We see it. Come on, roll please, move.
Rhonda Allen.
Here.
Richie Boland.
Here.
Veronica Buchanan.
Here.
Will Jordan.
Here.
Mike Kush.
Present.
Jeff Phillips.
Present.
Pettis Reed.
Here.
Steve Sandlin.
Here.
Mike Vaught.
Here.
Vincent Windrow.
Here.
Craig Lynch.
Present.
We have a call.
Okay, David, Coes Department.
Monthly reports on the table, Mr. Chairman.
All right, thank you, sir. We do have one item withdrawn. The B item at the bottom of the page, Eric Weber and Robert Brinney, the rezoning and a conditional use permit, that has been withdrawn. So if you're here for that, that has been withdrawn. Submitted for final plat approval, Leanna Estates. Go ahead.
Yes, Mr. Chairman, thank you. As you stated, this is Leanna Estates, it's located on the north side of Leanna Road. Planting Commissioners will recall that this was actually on the agenda at our last meeting, however, we hadn't received the revisions in time to review them prior to the meeting, so we bumped it to this meeting. Essentially, the applicant's proposing to subdivide the property into three different tracts, as you can see on the provided plan on your tables. Each tract will have adequate road frontage and soil sites. While considered a minor plat under our regulations, this cannot be an administrative plat because it is three lots. State law does not allow us to sign off administratively on anything greater than two lots. Really, the only outstanding issue on this plat as it's presented to us tonight is that at the time, it was unknown whether or not that the, when the plat was done, whether or not this line, the water line here, would support a fire hydrant. It turns out that it will, so a fire hydrant will need to be added to the plan to show that these lots would be within 1,000 feet of that, of that fire hydrant. Besides that, this plan appears to be in good order. I'll be happy to answer any questions. Mr. Mitchell Bowman, the applicant, is also present if you have any questions of him.
Any questions? Your motion?
Motion approved, Mr. Chairman.
A motion to approve, have a second.
Okay.
All present, motion say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, no. Motion carries, it is approved.
Did, did you, does he know of the fire hydrant?
Yes, I told him that.
Fire hydrant, you do know that? Yeah, okay, okay.
Fire hydrant. Yes. Yes.
Okay. Site plan approval, Will Coe travel with class now?
Yes, Mr. Chairman, thank you. As Planting Commissioner members will recall, this plan was also on the agenda at our last Planting Commission meeting, just in way of, just a little history of the property, this item was actually considered at the June 29, 2010 Planting Commission meeting. Since that time, the plan, the owner has requested several modifications be made to the plan. Probably the most, the greatest change to the plan was the fact that the, the two sides, there's the, the one side for the passenger vehicles and then the other side for the larger trucks were connected originally, now they are not sharing a connection. There was some discussion at the Planting Commission meeting about this at the last meeting and the issue had come up either providing a possible connection between the two or possibly to add a diesel pump to the side with the passenger vehicles. Since our last meeting, we've had a, a meeting with city officials as well as the engineer for the, for the plan, Huddleston Steel with Mr. Manley Thwait and also Bill Huddleston was present. As you can see on the plan, they have had a, added a note that the one pump over in the passenger vehicle area will provide diesel. There was also some concern about whether or not a, a car with a large trailer on it would be able to maneuver around this area. You can see from this plan and it's, if you flip a couple pages over, there's actually, they've actually done kind of a zoomed in area of both sides. You can see that there is 100 feet, average about 100 feet of pavement on the one side of the canopies, between the canopy and also, between the canopy and the end of the parking lot closest to Epsom Hill Road. We feel that that was really the, that, that would take care of anybody with the larger trailers or anything coming over to this area. The applicant really would prefer not to have the connection between the two. After looking at this and discussing it amongst the meeting that we had, I think it's safe to say the county staff does feel the same way. There was also some concern about the amount of space in between the intersection and where the entrance is to the passenger vehicle area. Again, during our meeting, city officials didn't, their traffic staff has looked at this and didn't, they weren't as concerned with that as they were maybe about some of the changes that they've also made on the truck side about making those entrances deeper to allow a little more stacking room for the trucks leaving the property. So with that, that's just kind of a brief overview of the meeting. They have made some other changes to this plan, something, a few things that the city has requested. You'll notice the, the large landscape island in the, the truck side of the property, they've added some end islands to provide a little separation and some distinction, if you will, of where the parking area is, so trucks wouldn't just be pulling through there, that they've added that. There was also some concern, again, more from the city standpoint regarding the location of the cooler on the backside of the building. They've kind of pulled out the curb line a little bit just to provide some extra protection for that. With that, I'll be happy to answer any questions that the commission may have.
Okay. Questions was about the joining the two together, what we had over there, and I think Rhonda, you had about the stacking problem with the traffic count, so you had questions on those.
So how many vehicles, how many tractor-truck trailers can go from Epsom Hill Road back to Capital Way? Because when we had measured before, we measured only about two trucks. The two trucks could, would stack up and would block that exit there.
You're talking from the intersection to that first entrance?
Right. Did they move that at all because it appears to be in the same place?
It did, they have not moved that. No, they, yeah, they did, they did not, they left that location where it was. Again, after meeting with the city, they felt it was, their traffic staff felt it was okay where it was, so they didn't, they didn't make any more revisions to that area, to that particular.
Okay, and then Mike may want to speak to this, but I thought, maybe I just misunderstood, I thought one of the concerns we had was that we wanted a gas pump in the back where the trucks were for the extra, not the diesel in the front, it was the gas in the back.
Okay, well, then I apologize, I missed, I mean, I was assuming you meant diesel on the other side, I apologize, I may have misunderstood you.
This is not bad, but it's, well, they brought our own tanks, yeah.
Well, I would think that the, most of the mobile homes and everything, or like the mobile, not mobile homes, the, like RVs and whatnot, those would still be pulling into this, the first one. Again, with the amount of room that they have between the pumps and the parking area, there's 100 foot of maneuverability there. There's not a copy on your tables before you, but there is, the, Huddleston has provided a diagram showing that somebody with a 20-foot trailer could come in here and make a turn in here with adequate, they have adequate space to pull and turn around and go back out without having to bag.
They've got 47 feet here on one side from the back of the parking spots. A lot of times a car will hang out over the parking spots, 47 feet. I pull big trailers, you're not going to turn a big motorhome or a big trailer at 47 feet into a gas island between the pumps. And I'm not a traffic expert by any means, but I know across interstate, Veronica mentioned last month, over at Love's Truck Stop, you go out the sideways and those trucks are backed up and if there's two trucks there, you don't get down at Laxess Road and if it's busy, you just sit there and wait if you're trying to turn back the interstate. It's going to be the exact same thing coming out of here. If there's more than two trucks sitting there, you're not getting out of the front side of the business, you're going to be blocked and they're going to have to cross a lane to go across opposing traffic to go back toward the interstate. We're on the opposite side of the interstate, they're actually having the right of way turning right directly onto their sides and this looks like it's even worse to me. I don't know, I don't feel comfortable with this myself and I feel sure the city's got some wonderful traffic engineers know a lot more than I do, but that just looks like that's a bottleneck waiting to happen right there for the, the poor souls who can easily turn in, but they're never going to get out if it's during morning or evening hours when Epsom Hill has any traffic at all, those trucks are going to be backed up and they can't get out.
Well, again, after, after the meeting we had, we all felt pretty comfortable with what they were proposing, so.
Do you want to address that? Do you want to come forward and address those questions?
Manley Thwait, Huddleston Steel Engineering. The, the distance from the intersection to the entrance there, as we're saying, is probably about two trucks that would be stacking up there. If the Planting Commission is wanting, you know, the lane, the access could be shifted just a little bit and probably still be able to achieve a good circulation. We are comfortable where it is, just based on the expertise that we have at our company and that the city engineers have, that it should work as, as we're showing it. We'll try to address all the concerns that the Planting Commission, you know, does have though, but we just feel that this will work properly.
You said you could, you could shift the entrance some to the...
A little bit away from it, a little bit away from the intersection. We wouldn't, I wouldn't feel comfortable shifting it another 100 foot, but just a little bit more to be able to get maybe a couple of tractor-trailers and a, another car or two, something like that, another, you know, 20 feet or so, but then that's going to put a little bit of a, of a curve into that, into that, and then that's going to hard, have a hard turn, right turn, coming in from Capital Way there into the, into the, to the lot.
Like I said, I'm not a traffic expert, but yet, common sense tells you virtually all of the trucks coming out here are going to go to the left. When they get there, they're heading back to the interstate and stuff and, and there's a lot of development down Epsom Hill, some, some big subdivisions. You know, there's a lot of people come through there in the morning and in the afternoon and I just, it just looks like a bottleneck to me because all those trucks are going to be in that turn lane and they're not going to be facing anything going the other direction, you know, and they're all going to be trying to get back to interstate and, and if Epsom Hill is busy at all, then they're crossing a lane of traffic, it's just going to slow everything down and I don't know, it gets to be a problem, I guess people will know better next time, go the one across the other side of Epsom Hill if they can't get out.
Yeah.
But I don't think 20, 30 feet is going to make enough difference to be worthwhile. That's why I'd kind of hope for some interconnection, so if it was backed up there, at least you could come out and I know it's, in a way, you don't want inter, intermix of trucks and the cars, at least that they were jammed up, they could come out and go up one of these farther back ways, but that's as good as, that's, that's a double edged sword.
Right, well, I can say that Wilco, you know, we, we, I talked to them about having the connector drive between the two and they, you know, they weren't just going to jump up and down and say, "Yeah, sure, we'll do that," but they, they were willing to do that. Or the, the putting the pump, the diesel pump up front, they would be willing to do that, one or the other. At one point in time here recently, they have been amenable to, you know, either of those two situations. Of those two, this is the one that they would prefer to have, is this, the pump up front for the diesel, because you're going to have some of the doleys and work trucks and so forth that come up, pull into the front area and they're looking for a diesel pump and so they will be provided one and as Mr. Demossi was saying, there's, you know, adequate room to turn around, so as far as the, the traffic onsite, we feel that this, you know, is adequate to, to address all those concerns and honestly, we feel that it addresses a concern off the side as well. But we, again, the desires of the Planting Commission, we need to do our best to, to address those.
I have a follow-up question. Doug, do I remember correctly that this is not going to be, there'll be no traffic signal on Epsom Hill Road and Capital Way?
That is, you're correct.
Okay. I just need for you to spend just a minute and educate me on the logic of only having one entrance and exit out of each of these sides, because I'm thinking if you have emergency vehicles or a disabled vehicle or something along those lines, it just doesn't, I can't follow the logic, so I just need for you to indulge me for just a second and explain to me the logic behind having only one entrance and exit on each side.
Well, first of all, there are two for the truck, for the truck side, but for the, for the, for the passenger vehicles up front, you know, there are, there is, there is one entrance because it's pretty much what the geometry of this site in reality will allow. They have done this type of design, I guess you could say, in other places and they, to my knowledge, they haven't stopped this kind of design from happening and it hasn't been an issue in those other places. So if you would like for us to pursue, you know, another entrance into that passenger car side, we can certainly do that. I know at one time, we had a, an access onto the passenger side from Epsom Hill Road and that was, been, it's been some time ago, last year. I'm not exactly sure the reason why we took that out, it may be that the, that the city department, Planting Department didn't, that may not have wanted that particular access. I can't remember how far the controlled access goes from the interstate down Epsom Hill Road, but that would probably be another issue to avoid that controlled access fence. So there was two accesses into the property at one time. I can't remember the one about Epsom Hill Road while it was taken out, but again, you know, Wilco is, they're all over the, you know, many places throughout the country and, and these are just the kinds of designs that they have all, have done, that's the best I can tell you and if that answer, doesn't answer your question, I don't know.
The, the one you were talking about before, when that would cause, maybe, when you, soon as you came off the interstate and boom, you were right up on it?
Right, it was a right, it was a right turn.
Yeah, that was what it was, I think.
I forget how far in that control access fence goes.
Now, have they done a design just like this with the same in and out as far as, the same format? This much road frontage and?
The one, the one that I know I can speak of is in Mont Eagle. They have one access that is into the passenger side, passenger vehicle side, and it's about the same width as what you've got there and, yes ma'am, it's really quite honestly about the same distance off of the interstate as what we're showing there.
The same traffic flow and?
Right, that's right. They do have on that one, again, it's been a few months, that one, they do have a restricted connector drive. It's not for the use of the public, it's for their, their, their fuel truck to be able to come in and use that particular access, because I guess they, the location of their store, their fuel pumps, the underground storage tanks, probably necessitated just a little connector drive, but it's not supposed to be used and I don't even know if it's chained off or not, but it's not supposed to be used for the public. So the connector drive per se that we have talked about for the past few days, or past couple of weeks, is not the same as what we would have had here. But again, you know, the, the connector drive is, has been discussed, was one of the options that Wilco didn't think was the end of the world, this would just be the one that they would rather have.
If there was a connector drive, where would you put it?
Do you want me to show you?
Can you show, you've got a point, where's the?
It, I, I'll do the best I can. At the bottom, on the bottom of the, of the building, you see there's a couple of parking spaces, a couple of rows of parking spaces there and that's where, that, that's where it would be. We would basically rotate the parking spaces clockwise a little bit down, those last, last two rows there, rotate them down a little bit in order to have a little connector drive going to the back. That's, that's the design that I showed to them, you know, a week or so ago and that's, that's what they said that they would be okay to do. How did everybody, did y'all, can y'all see that?
The traffic on the side of the building.
Yeah, yeah, that's right.
Yeah.
To the, to the east side of the building there.
Is it double wall gas tank, but is that what I'm saying?
I think it is, that's right, that's what they did in Mont Eagle, right, right.
Any more questions?
Why, why did you run the house? Do you fully have the, the gas pump, 25 foot bench tank, pretty good, and I understand that's actually, a lot of, a lot of standing.
So we had stopped a number of times and we would fill up, pull to where the truck, the tractor-trailers park, road tractors park, and then go in. You know, we may stay 30 minutes, get some coffee, whatever. The way this is, there's no way to get there without going back out on Capital Way. I mean, there's no way to park a gooseneck unless you take up about, you take up, at least, the time you back in, you take up seven to 10 spaces, you know?
Right, right.
And that's what I don't like about it, the way it is right now.
Those seven to 10 spaces got to be empty.
Yeah, and they got to be empty, there's nowhere to park a trailer on, on the gas, on the passenger side, you know?
Right. Now, in this, that's valid, there are, there's a plethora of parking spaces that we're showing, you know, and they do, they meet the, the codes for the county and the city, but you're right, if there's a, a peak time and if there are sporadic cars that every five, six spaces or whatever, then, you know, there might be a, an issue, maybe perhaps a connector drive as, as the Planting Commission is leaning towards, might be the thing to do, because that's an outlet that they can get out. But we, we are providing a whole lot of room there to turn around, that's for sure.
I've got a friend that's got an RV that's gasoline powered, which is mostly used when it's armed, and he says a lot of the bigger stops have got an RV island, which has the smaller diesel pumps and a gas pump. That's not proposed on this.
I don't think so.
There's no gas pumps on the back, but he said he...
No, no, get, no regular gas pumps on the back?
He said he looked for the ones that are RV, he calls them RV friendly. They've got a gas and a diesel pump, both separate, kind of in the same areas as the big trucks, he has room to pull his camper around, but, but he said that's what, his RV club or whatever, they, they tell him where those spots are, you know, and I'd kind of hoped or envisioned something like that on this, that would solve Mike's problem. We're getting into micromanaging the management of the truck stop here, I'm afraid, but...
Well, you're, you're right down the road from the big RV dealership right here. People coming in out there would be pretty smart to put something like that at this one. Yeah, it's right in behind, a lot of people coming in getting parts or getting worked on or whatever, but. One other question I had for David is the signs, the, have they made any applications yet? They want until after this is approved, I guess, for signage?
No, we don't have any applications for it.
I was just noticing on there, the two, I guess the interstate sign, 150 square foot, that's on here.
Mr. Sandlin, yeah, if I, I can, if I can address that. One of our comments was that approval of the site plan doesn't constitute approval of the signage on here, because that one proposed sign that they've got closest to the intersection, that, that is, exceeds our regulations anyway, but, but, but yeah, they, they understand that, that was actually one of the responses, that they understand that just because it's on the plan doesn't mean that it's approved with the site plan, so, and they're, they're going to have to abide by city regulations as well, so the stricter of the two will, will apply.
You put that in writing then?
What's that, that was, was part of our staff comments.
Okay.
Yes, sir.
Mike?
The, I'm going to go back with the original problem I had a couple of weeks ago and that's with the stormwater issue. I don't have a lot of confidence in the ability or maintenance schedule for sweeping the parking lot. Sweeping and vacuuming is certainly a, a good deal, it's better than nothing, but it's not a good stormwater quality solution. Although T-dec's requirements may not require that they're doing anything with the oils, I mean, stop and think, this is acres of asphalt with tractor-trailer trucks that have the potential to leak hydraulic fluid and who knows what other kind of liquids can leak, can leak out. And sweeping's not going to do that. Sweeping will do the dust, but it has nothing to do with the hydrocarbons. And if you're, if you're basically going to direct all that to the detention pond, you're going to have a nice rainbow sheen film on your detention pond for the whole year. For what it costs for a sweeping machine, he could put multiple water quality units in here or an oil-water separator. So that's my main concern, is just the stormwater quality. It's not, it may be fully addressed by the regulations, but for a long-term deal, I, I don't trust, I, I, I hate to depend on the owner to decide when and where and how often he's going to sweep, you know? If, if he doesn't do it for a couple of months and you get a big rain, you're losing all that sand and, and dust particles in the detention area anyway. If you were directing it to a structural BMP, they'd be captured, you'd have oil booms in there and you could capture the hydrocarbons as well, so, and it'd be a lot cheaper, because a sweep, sweeping machine is minimum 50 grand and then you got to pay somebody to, to maintain it and to operate it, so I just have a hesitancy about sweeping or vacuuming a giant parking lot like this as the smart stormwater quality solution, so. I'd rather see a structural BMP or an oil-water separator in there and capture the oil, so that's, if I, that would be my reason to vote no, so, thank you.
Just a quick response to that, and I think you, you pretty much touched on it, is, you know, we've, we've addressed all of the criteria based on T-dec and, and those qualifications, so that, that's what this addresses.
The giant, the giant size of the field, all time, and potential fuel spills and oils which can have the essence, it might be a little bit of a...
Okay. Any comments?
I have one more question. I'm going to go a little bit different direction on you here. The county contracted with Huddleston Steel to do some long-range planning for what Epsom Hill Road might need to look like down the road. I don't remember, that project has not been completed yet, are you, do you know?
You know what, I'm sorry, I don't know, I worked on it.
That study has been completed.
Okay, so talk to me just for a second, Thindale, about the plans for Capital, Capital Way and I know it's, there's a cross street there on the other side, we've talked about a turn lane now and so I'm just trying, I'm trying to plan ahead. We know there's going to be development in that area, we know there already is a lot of residential development in that area, and I'm just trying to plan ahead for what's a good strategy, knowing how highly utilized this location will be, what's a good plan for the traffic relief out there?
Well, the, the current study calls for a, a three-lane road with a permanent turn lane in the middle of it. I think if you want to control the traffic, the trucks getting on Epsom Hill Road in a busy time, you're going, you're going to end up needing a traffic signal in there. I think the geology, as he says, the, the actual size of the site is one of the reasons you've got these constriction of traffic flow and trying to get the traffic going through there. Even if you put the traffic coming out that far entrance, you're still going to have some stacking problems and you get those trucks out on a timely, you, somebody's going to end up putting a traffic signal in there and make, I don't know how long it'll take to be. So that's what I think will end up eventually happening, particularly if they develop, where that road goes across Dollar General and if you're going back in there, if they develop it back in there in an industrial way.
So when you say somebody, who does that somebody usually fall to?
Well...
Last man in, that wants his development?
Yeah, I mean, that's up to you guys, I mean, you can put that as a condition of approving this or you can...
Well, explain that note in the top left-hand corner there on that page, that was at two of seven.
Well, we talked to, to the city, and, uh, they didn't mention a, a traffic signal going in there, so, uh, the only device that would be in there now is a stop sign.
This isn't a stop sign. It's a traffic signal.
So...
I guess at some point, it would be in there.
What's that?
At some point, at some point.
At, at, I think at some point you'll need a traffic signal there. But there's no plan at this time, and, and the city, at least they didn't indicate to us in our meeting we had to them, there's no plan at this time to put a signal there. Of course, that's not in the city, that, outside their, outside their urban growth boundary anyway.
We can put one in there tonight, right?
I, I mean, that's my thing.
I mean, to me, it seemed like what we're talking about, the stacking problem and that issue, I mean, that, that helps that problem.
That would alleviate that problem.
As far as afternoons, what you're talking about, uh, in the mornings also, so the, the high traffic volume time, so I mean, you know, I was taking it for granted that it was, it was gonna be going in there, but I'm proud you asked that question, 'cause, I mean, this, this note up here sounds like if they make any damage to it when they're doing all this stuff, they're gonna fix it and repair it, all that sorts, but there's no, nobody's saying there's a traffic, I mean, light gotta go in there yet.
There's no indication that we've heard. I don't think Doug's heard anything about a traffic signal going in there.
No, I, I can't say that I haven't, but my only...
Well, that comes back down to when we was doing traffic lights before and turn lanes and stuff, I mean, do, have y'all done a, a check on that to see if it, you know, qualifies for one, or, I mean...
Man, we did a traffic study out there when the turn lane came up, remember that? And there's not enough traffic based on TDOT's, uh, numbers, stuff, there's not enough traffic generated to put a traffic...
Without this project, but when this project, what does that number put into the equation?
Happens here, you got that permanent turn lane, you coming off the interstate with your truck, traffic through there, and so, uh, the numbers were generated a little bit further down there.
But then you're holding them hostage back here. They can't get out.
Right.
Doug, do you have a comment?
Uh, no, I think they'll cover it.
I mean, it's a tight turn there, because you got such a short distance between the interstate and stuff.
Well, I, I don't see this project going forward without a traffic light, so, I mean, I'm gonna put that as an amendment to this being approved. If we get an amendment, it seemed like we've had two or three red flags pop up here, and I don't, uh, we're not getting any answers, I don't think, solving some of the issues that are up. I mean, here we are in a, in a situation again where we're complying with TDEC, and, and the question I think on the floor was, uh, is that gonna work? And I, we get ourselves in a corner when we question, is that enough? You know, I think we've gotta comply with, with TDEC, and we've gotta comply with our traffic standards that we have in the books, so, um, I don't know if we're ready for a motion yet or whatever, but I, I definitely want that traffic light in there. If y'all make a note as part of the, whenever something does happen, that, uh, that a traffic light is put at, at Epsom Road and, uh, Capital Way.
Another solution to the, at least, uh, an option, anyway I say, I say solution, another option might be, if you are comfortable, to allow us to defer action on this again, allow us to look at the, the traffic and the warrants. I, I'm not, I, I can't speak to the warrants whether or not it would warrant a traffic light, and would we be requiring something that isn't really warranted at that point? I mean, that's, that's an option that I would, plus, that might give us a little extra time as well to address maybe the concerns Mr. Kusch had as far as the ground, uh, the stormwater, uh, measures that are being employed on the property.
Well, Doug, nine times out of ten, I would, I would say that'd be all right, that, that'd be great, but I think, uh, in, in both situations, for all those people living down Epsom, and then even for Wilco, and being able, those people to get out, I mean, we're gonna have to have a traffic light there. Somebody's gonna have to do it, so, um, and I'm not saying who's gonna do it, but it's gonna have to be done. So if it's, these folks coming in, they're gonna have to do that, we're gonna have to maintenance it, or what? I don't, I don't have the answer to that, but we're gonna have to have a traffic light before this project can be opened up and people start coming in there.
Right, and I understand where you're coming from, but by deferring action, we could have some answers to those questions as far as who's gonna provide maintenance to it, who's gonna install it, those kind of, those questions that you're, that you're bringing up right now, that would at least allow us to, to, you know, get some answers to that question, so.
I have a follow-up question along those lines. Um, do we have any, any options here in terms of possibly escrowing money towards a light if the, if the need presents itself? 'Cause, you know, I don't want these people to spend money unnecessarily, but, you know, we're just trying to apply a little common sense to this plan, and it looks like, you know, walking like a duck, quacking like a duck, it looks like we're gonna have traffic issues, and so I'm just, again, trying to think, is, what are all of our options that we can do to do the right thing by the applicant and do the right thing by the residents out there?
That is, I mean, I, I can say that that is an option. Um, now, it's not an option that we do very often, so, again, allowing us some time to, to look into that, just, I mean, it's something I know the city does on a fairly routine basis, provide, you know, they provide money in lieu of the improvement, and then when enough money is gathered, uh, and when the, the warrants present itself, then, yes, it's, the money's there, can be applied to that, to that purpose. Again, that's just not something that the county does very often, not, not that there's anything wrong with it, it's just, we're just not as familiar with the process and how that would work. But, again, that would allow us, defer would allow us an opportunity to, to, to look into that a little bit and provide some answers for that. But, I, I mean, that is an option, but, you know, escrowing, are they escrowing the entire amount, are they escrowing a portion? If they're escrowing a portion, which portion of it are they escrowing? Uh, what other developments are we going to, to get to contribute into that, that fund? Uh, I mean, pretty much any development that comes along Capital Way, or, you know, th- those are questions that, you know, quite frankly, we didn't come prepared to answer today, well, I apologize.
Doug, I've got two questions. You said it, it may not warrant a traffic light at this time. Well, does not the size of the development adjust, do you not factor in the, the future numbers this development's gonna bring? Because there's not any traffic virtually coming off Capital Way now, and there will be huge numbers after this is completed, so, that, that's one part of my question. The other part is, you know, you said that the, the city's tra- and, and the city's got a top-notch staff, I'll, I'll admit that to anybody, uh, their traffic people didn't have a problem with this, but were they thinking of a light there? I mean, common sense is a light, there's a Dollar General across, we got it lined up with this, there's more development coming, I mean, it's not in the city's urban growth boundary, they're not the ones who are gonna be able to dictate a light, it's gonna fall back on us, I take it, uh, even though they have design review, they can't require the light, I mean, that's, that's, that's our play to make, and, and, and there's more development coming. I mean, the other side of Capital Way, there's a large tract of land, it looks like it'll go commercial behind the, the Dollar General, so, uh, so, I mean, uh, when, if we don't do a light now, when do we do a light, or, or how does a light come to be?
Well, I guess, the answer to the first part of your question, uh, you know, a, a traffic study, uh, will take into account the best data available at the time when a study is done. Uh, in this situation, probably the last numbers we had, uh, out in this area when the, the Dollar General went out that way, of course, I think that was one of the sites we put our counter out there just to get an idea, and it turned out the numbers were pretty consistent with what TDOT had.
Looks like there's bound to be some sort of variation in that. If you're putting in something that had three thousand full-time employees, when Nysalem was built, Enon Springs Road did not warrant any improvements, you know, when it was a farm out there, but as soon as it was built, it better have been improved, and it was, you know, but the, but the, but by that same methodology you, you're, you're describing, there wouldn't, wouldn't have been any improvements in front of Nysalem till after...
Right, and, well, I, I guess what I'm saying is, at the, whenever the last time the study was done, of course, all they were doing were traffic counts, I doubt they did any kind of a study. If they were to do a, some kind of a, a warrant study today, they would take into account this, that is here right now. Um, and now, as far, I'm not a traffic engineer, nor am I the son of a traffic engineer, so, you know, as far as the methodology they use for that, that's, it's a little beyond my, my expertise on that. But, I, I will say that, you know, if one is done today, I would assume that they would incorporate the development that's out there, the post-development that they know is coming, and, 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 sweet may, you know, if I'm misspeaking, please say so, and considering the zoning of the area, you know, there is, there's, there is more industrial zoning out in this area right now, there's also a lot of, of residential zoning out here, you know, somehow, um, you know, accounting for, for that, of course, you can only, you can only count for the unknown to a certain extent, you know, like you said, if, uh, a large company comes along and locates on the south side of, uh, Epsom Road, I mean, there's no way we can really forecast that, and then at that time, you know, they would have to adjust the numbers accordingly. Now, the, the second part of your, uh, question, I believe, and, I'm, I'm sorry, uh, that had to do with, uh, I believe you said the city's traffic staff not having any kind of an issue with the, um, with the, the situation out there?
You know, the, the city, when they said that they were okay with the traffic pattern, were they envisioning a traffic light? They can't dictate a traffic light, in my opinion, so...
As far as...
Damn it does.
As far as the meeting that we had with the city officials, and that was with the planning director, Mr. Adalot, as well as one of their staff planners, Mrs. Shannon Logan, uh, there was not any indication that a light was going to be placed there, that, quite frankly, the issue didn't even come up, as far as whether or not a, a traffic light was gonna be located there. So it's our understanding, as Mr. Corbett had said earlier, that, that it's not. Now, that note on the plan that Mr. Sandlin was referring to earlier, I don't know if that's just a kind of a, like a general note they put on their site plans, you know, for any developments in the city?
It's a standard, it's just a standard comment, right.
So it could just be on, I don't know if they're proposing to add loops, you know, actually in the pavement when they do it, for in the future when a signal is added, they want to tear the road up, that could be what they're referring to, uh, but there was no indication from the city at that meeting that they were contemplating a traffic signal at this location.
Mr. Lewis, can you come shed some light on this, please? Solve the problem.
Robert Lewis, uh, Murphsboro Planning Department. I wasn't included in this meeting with Joseph A. Lot and, and Mr. Devasti and Ms. Logan. The city planning department has reviewed this si- site plan for a number of, a number of times, uh, and as you can see on the revisions, dates, and the numbers over here on the side, we haven't cured anything, 'cause we're back to square one. Uh, the city still has to make, uh, you know, a re- a review of this site plan before it can, uh, can come back to y'all, or is, is approved. Uh, so at this point, we're still batting back and forth ways to make this better. Uh, I know Mr. Adlot said, just like Mr. Devasti said in the beginning, that the, the throat needs to be a little bit deeper on the, on the first section, excuse me, uh, and, and the back part also could do, use a little cleaning up also, and a connection made at the bottom down there, uh, might help, plus some islands, some traffic island, landscape islands in the big parking area where the trucks are. But, we haven't approved this site plan yet, so, we got traffic engineers that will look at it, and I know at one point in time, there was another way onto Epsom. I don't think anything is just assured of, of being developed yet, 'cause it, uh, I know the owner, uh, makes a lot of revisions himself, so, we still have to approve it, the planning department still has to approve it, uh, before it can go any, you know, before it can be approved, so. Like I say, we haven't given this blessing, we haven't given the, the final approval on it yet, and I think that we're still open for options, you know? Uh, I don't know, a traffic light, I can talk to Mr. Balachandra, I'll see him in the morning and see what he knows about it. Uh, he hasn't mentioned to me anything about it, 'cause I've never asked him, uh, I'm not sure if the planning staff has either. But at this point in time, we'll, we're, we're gonna look at this again and, and make some comments, because, uh, the owner still hasn't made it the way the city is, is happy with it yet.
What part do y'all go to as far as you, uh, I know y'all bringing in sewer, basically to the west side of the building, straight up on Capital Way, it's where sewer's coming in. Sewer, I guess, existing right now is down the center of Capital Way?
I really don't know the exact location of the sewer, but I know it's out there for...
It's kinda what it's showing, so I guess maybe that's, that's what it goes to, but then, um, y'all don't go to the, what is that, the, the west side then of Capital Way? Is that as, that's not as far as y'all go, 'cause sewer goes on out to that subdivision now?
The city had design review on the Dollar General across Epsom. Of course, it's in a sewer assessment district, whether it hooks on the sewer or not, I believe it's still in that district, so it has to fall under the city's review, if I'm not mistaken.
Yeah, if you look at the site plan, um...
Well, it's a pretty good area there, the city is reviewing, so we're not gonna stop with this piece of property.
Yeah, if you look at the site plan along Capital Way, you'll see there's a line along Capital Way, it's a dash line, it's got S running through it, that's the sewer line.
Yeah, that's what...
It kinda gets to, right, it kinda gets to Capital, and then it takes, I guess it's turned to the west, and then go, kinda goes off the sheet from there. But that kinda gives you the idea about, it's a part, now, like you said, the Dollar General tied on to that, so they probably just tied a line to the, the trunk going across the street, but then that line, I'm assuming that line goes all the way to the, the subdivision.
Dollar General's done, so they, they didn't tie on, did they?
Uh, I don't know if they did or not, I don't know.
So what stage are y'all at, at, at your planning?
We're still waiting for a site plan to be submitted and approved.
So a site plan hasn't even been submitted to the city?
Yeah, we've, we've seen many site plans, but we haven't approved any yet.
Okay.
Mr. Lewis, correct me, it, this actually did go to your planning commission last year about the same time it went to ours, so I guess it was approved at that time, but they've made the revision since then. They're, the city's a little bit different in, in, in their site plan approvals from the county, in that their approvals last for eighteen months, ours lasts for twelve.
That's correct, yeah.
Uh, so what they're doing at this point is a lot of staff review of the changes that have been made. Now, this actually expired, their approval expired in the county, which is why they're being brought back to, to, to you for review.
Okay.
So a lot of what, is, is, correct me if I'm, is that correct, is my understanding?
Well, I'm not even sure when the last time it's come to the city planning department, I don't, I can't read this, it's so small.
Yes, sir.
Go address it.
Been pretty recent, we've, uh, we've re-submitted it to the, uh, city planning staff within the past couple of weeks, but it has not been approved, as Mr. Lewis is saying, so.
Okay. Will?
Well, I hate to keep batting this around, but I think we've got some questions that need to be answered, and need to give staff a chance to figure out about the traffic light, about stuff Mr. Kusch made, brought up and all, and I'll make a motion we defer this the next meeting in two weeks, and see if we can have some more answers and do this correctly when we do do it.
Second motion.
Okay. Yes, sir.
I'm not gonna be comfortable voting for this unless we either connect the two areas, the, the, uh, the light-duty area and the heavy-duty area, or convert one, one of the islands in the back to RV and light truck gas pumps with proper signage to get the people there.
Okay, and let me just, uh, just state that I apologize for misunderstanding, uh, I, I guess I was, I thought you meant diesel on the other side as opposed to something over here, and that's...
As many diesel cars, as many diesel cars as there are, and, and as many diesel trucks that are out there that might not be pulling a truck or someday, I think it's good to have a diesel pump on that side, too. And one more thing, the trunk connectors to Capital Way, I notice one of them's twenty-two feet, you're in lane, and then the other two, uh, then, uh, one of them's nineteen, twelve, and twelve, and the other one is twenty-two, tw- fourteen and twelve. Why would there be a difference in the size? And they're probably gonna take the first one, you know, it looks like to me they ought to be the same width.
Well, we'll, we'll check that, I, I, I mean, it could just be because of the geometry of the way the turn was made, of course, the, the turn-ins are wider just because of the fact that the, um, the trucks would be coming in right there.
Right, but it, it looks like to me they ought to be at least the same size.
Right, why they're different, I, I will find out, I don't, I really don't know.
Okay. All right, we have a motion, excuse me, have a motion to defer, and have a second. All in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, no. Motion carries. We'll look at it on the date of...
Be the twenty-second.
Twenty-second, twenty-second. Okay, rezoning request, Michelle Mobbs and John Bimbo, rezoning conditional use permit on Couchville Pike, Doug?
Thank you, Chairman Lynch. The application, uh, the property's located eighty-nine oh-nine Couchville Pike, it's approximately five acres in size. It is currently zoned R-15 with a request to go to services, which is a commercial zone. The applicant is proposing to use the existing building for an electrical contractor's office. Impulse Electrical Systems designs and installs electrical equipment for commercial industrial clients, so most of their work is actually done on the job site, uh, there are typically about seven employees coming to this site. Uh, the hours of operation would be from seven AM to three-thirty PM, Monday through Friday. Now, this building was constructed back in the late nineteen-eighties and used as a farm workshop for a while, uh, it has slowly evolved over the years, gone through a couple of different uses. In two thousand and three, the building was refurnished to commercial standards, and since that time, it's been before this board, uh, two times for conditional use permits. Each time, you guys only, uh, granted the conditional use permit and made it... Each time, you guys only granted the conditional use permit and made it set to expire upon sale or transfer of the property, which is why it's before you again this evening. This proposed project is consistent with the land use policies within the comprehensive plan. Uh, you can see that Couchville Pike is labeled as a rural corridor, which does allow low intensity commercial development along it. Also, if the property is rezoned this evening, then we could start seeing it be brought up to commercial standards, such as landscaping, parking lot design, paved parking, distance to fire hydrant, the fire hydrant can be supported in that area. I spoke with the people, um, representative from the Gladesville Utility District, and then a fire hydrant could be installed at this location. So just a quick look at the property. Um, here's the existing building, an existing gravel parking area.
Elizabeth, on the other side of the road is Wilson County, correct?
Not quite.
Not quite.
Uh, there's probably a quarter of a mile between the other side of the road and Wilson County.
Okay. So how far from the 840 interchange down Couchville Pike is it?
Pretty good ways.
Going back toward 231?
Yeah, it, it, it's much closer to Weekly Lane.
Going away from, okay, so you go... I got you.
I believe one of the reasons the applicant, who is present, and will be able to answer this better than I, uh, chose this location, is they do work for Nissan a lot, and this is near Weekly Lane, which, you know, connects down to Jefferson Pike and, and Nissan Drive. Um, still pretty good ways away.
Pretty good little ways. The county line is right down Corinth Road, because there've been issues, that's in my commission district. There's been issues with which school bus goes down Corinth Road, because there's, Rutherford County and Wilson County both, and there've been issues where the truck, buses can turn around and stuff, so you're pretty close to county line right there. Actually, I don't mean to correct you, that building was built by somebody back in the 80s that ran school buses, it was a, what they called a bus barn, and they worked on their school buses there, but it was built illegally, without permits, and all at the point in time. And so, and there've been a lot of issues. Several community meetings out there over this one building.
Does it have all sites moved?
It, it has a septic system that is functioning, uh, and I spoke with a representative from the T-Det Groundwater Division, and they thought that with seven employees, it would still be able to handle that type of capacity.
What are our current restrictions on the ones that just expired on a number of employees? I remember there was two different companies that'd been in there, and each time, we limited the number of vehicles, no outside storage, no, no vehicles left after hours inside and view or whatever, and number of employees. I didn't think we allowed seven employees there.
That would be more, I believe the last one was four.
Because I've had several calls from people in the neighborhood, they said they were okay as long as they didn't have anything, any more intensive than what we had allowed in the past, which was four employees.
Okay. Do you have any more comments?
No, but, but I'd be happy to answer any more questions.
Kevin, do we have any more questions from the commission, before we do open it up to a public hearing? Yes, sir.
Now, are we going for a permanent rezoning here, or a conditional use that will expire as the last ones have?
Staff's recommendation is that if you are going to approve this use, that you rezone the property. The thought process being, if you rezone it, then we can make the applicant pave the parking, we can make them put in the proper landscaping, we can make them install a fire hydrant. Uh, whereas that becomes more difficult if it's just the conditional use permit. Uh, the property has been built for commercial use, so we're going to continue to see this type of requests coming through, and if we continue to just approve the use, it'll be just this use, and then the next use, and the next use. So we would recommend approving them together.
And it would be services, right?
Yes, that's correct.
The neighbors out there are somewhat opposed to that, because it's not exactly in a commercial area. You know, it's not, there's no other commercial to speak of for several miles, and if, for say, the thing burnt down, or tornado, or something, natural disaster, and the building was no longer there, it would go back to residential use. If we zone this services, then that's going to be a commercial spot forevermore, basically, and, and that, and, and...
And, and I understand what you're...
Yeah, and the argument go either way here. I, I understand, we need more control, but I'm just saying what the neighbors out there, they, they're afraid if this gets zoned commercial, and all of a sudden, well, let's put some commercial across the road, and next door, and down the road, and stuff, and, and starts turning a residential area into a commercial node, all because one guy built the building 25 years ago without a permit.
I mean, and, and I understand the, the concerns they have, but, you know, as Ms. Emslie stated, I mean, basically what we have here is a commercial use of property with residential zoning. Uh, I mean, it, in our eyes, it just doesn't make a lot of sense that way. You know, this has been out there, like you said, for 20-plus years, it's been commercial the whole time, it's not going to revert back to the residential zone, any, ever, back to the residential use of the property, at least it doesn't appear to be, because the building is there, somebody would have to either tear it down, or just totally renovate it for a house, which I don't know how practical that would be. Uh, I mean, at this point, we just feel it is what, just call it what it is, it's a commercial piece of property. But again, that's really, you know, the planning commission's recommendation to make.
Okay, any other comments?
Have you heard from the neighbors out there? Have they contacted your office?
I personally have not talked to, I don't think I've talked to anybody about this particular zoning case.
I believe I've answered one or two phone calls, just inquisitive, uh, no real opinion one way or the other, that they informed me.
In the slides, when you were going through the pictures, there was a, um, a house that's adjacent to the property. Is it abandoned, or is it occupied?
That, that is one concern we did have, was this is the property line in between the commercial building and the house. You can't actually see the house in this photo, but that, that is the distance, where you see the, the, the fence. Um, of course, landscaping would be required to be placed in the property, uh, privacy fence of some sort, but it is, it is a shorter distance than we would like to see if it was a new building being constructed on the property. We would want to see it in a different location, um, we can get back to a different picture. So this, this property will continue to have some issues, just because it was built, you know, without permits. Um, it would likely have to seek variances from the bore zone appeals with any new addition that was brought on, and they could put more conditions on it at that time if they needed to. Um, so here's the picture you're probably talking about with the, where you can actually see the house and its proximity to this building.
And is that house occupied?
I believe so, yes.
It's not on the property, but I think the coach department is investigating that house currently, are we not, David?
Yep.
Because you and I had a conversation about that house...
Right.
...a week or two ago, so there are issues with the house next door.
Mike, do you want to give anything else? Mike, give a question? Does anybody else, anybody else have any question before we open up to a public hearing? Okay, we will open it up to a public hearing. Would the applicant, please come forward.
While he's coming up, I do have one question. I noticed there's a letter in here, so they sent a letter out to the neighbors, is that, it's on the back?
Yes, there was a letter that the applicant sent to the neighbors.
So they did inform the neighbors?
Yeah, that's good. Your name, please, your name.
Michelle Mobbs.
Okay, do you, do you want to say anything, or do you...
Yes, I did speak to the neighbors at the corner with the swimming pool over here, in the corner, probably almost a mile away. I went door to door. Um, no one has an issue with it being commercial. The people on this side that are the closest, they have a sign that says, um, that you can't come on their property, so I didn't get to talk to them. Um, I sent out a letter, I talked to Elizabeth Emslie.
Did you talk to Mrs. Little, who lived down that long driveway there, go down beside the driveway?
No, I drove down her driveway, and I felt like it wasn't safe for me to go down. So we put, um, letters and everybody's...
She's one of the ones that contacted me, and I've talked to her on each of the other. Okay, and her husband just passed away a few months ago, and, uh, they've been very involved with the different changes in this building over the years.
John, when John and I looked at this property, we were told that it was commercial. We went to sign the papers the 1st of July, we found out there was like an attachment stating that it had to be, that the commercial would be non-existent once we signed those papers. So we did not purchase the property at that time. If it will not be zoned commercial, then we, of course, it would be no use for us. So, um, that's where we're at. I guess it's in ours.
Okay, Ma?
It's, um, it'd be an ideal property for us, but...
If it was left, the zoning was left like it has in the past, with the conditional use permit, where you could run your business out of, that, would that not work for you? Is that the same as it has with the past two businesses?
Um, we would like that, but it comes non-voyed once we sign the papers. I mean, we're asking for your permission.
No, that's not, we could do what we've done in the past, where leave, leave it zoned residential with a conditional use permit for your business, specifically stating what your business is, and for that to lapse upon sale of the property, which is not good planning, according to most people in the Planning Institute, but, uh, but that is just what we've done in the past.
Right. And if that's allowable, that...
What about number of vehicles, number of vehicles, number of employees? I mean, are there...
More, there's probably going to be four there all the time. We've got two trailers out at the Nissan site, so three, probably three, maybe even four of the guys will be out there. I'd say 75% of the time. So I just wanted, like, we have meetings on Monday morning, there would probably be seven cars, there's six to seven cars.
You mentioned trailers, like office trailers that people are working at?
We do.
Will any of those ever become and be parked on-site? Are you okay with no outside storage being one of the restrictions?
Um, we would like to build a, build, because the five acres is also appealing to us. We'd like to build a shop, not attached, to do, um, fabrication, panel fabrication and such. That would have to go in front of the board to see if we're allowed to do that.
That would be more employees also, would it not do in the fabrication?
Um, it'd probably be two, maybe? So...
Mike, do you have a question? Do you have a question?
I'm sorry, ma'am, what?
Anybody else?
What, what is exactly do, is your, is the business? What, what is it you're doing?
We're electrical contractors. We do mostly industrial work. Uh, we do work in Alabama Honda, we do work in, of course, for Nissan in Mississippi and here in Smyrna. Most of our guys, they all go strictly to the Nissan plant or the facility.
You do electrical in the plant, or...
We do.
Okay.
Yes.
So you just...
We also do, um, mechanical, we just operate a mechanical division, and we do, we hang conveyor for Nissan.
Okay. So the building you're talking about for later, what would you be fabricating?
Panels, electrical panels.
Electrical panels, okay.
Which you, all you need is a couple of guys in there to put the panels together, feed all the, um, controls and such, and then we take that and to, and take it straight to the...
How, how, how large would that building be? Would it be any bigger than the one there, or what are you thinking on that?
We, um, I would say probably fifty foot wide, forty foot wide by maybe seventy-five foot and one, pretty decent sized shop. We don't want to leave anything out on the side. You know, we were, we had intentions of putting up a fence around the park, um, course cleaning it up.
Okay, Will, questions? Anybody else have a question?
Staff, we know how many square feet in the building is there now. I'm guessing a 2,800 square foot building is going to be close as big as the building we've got up front already.
Yeah, that, that of course would have to go through the site plan approval process, and would come before your review. I'm not positive off the top of my head, the size of the building.
Are they hunt for that? You are currently in Goodlettsville?
Yes.
4,380 square foot.
So you would be bringing the seven jobs?
Actually, none of us are working in the Goodlettsville office. We're all at the Nissan plant, working out of the trailers at this point.
Okay, okay. But you would be relocating from Goodlettsville to this site?
That's correct.
It might be clo, actually, uh, look, I apologize to interrupt, uh, it looks like, it might be about 6,300, because it says there's a 4,380 square foot structure, it will be used for office space and storage of tools, is over 2,000 square foot, so this is awkwardly worded, for office space and storage of tools.
This one says 4,300.
Ma'am, it, it looks like, I think the way this is worded is saying that 2,000 square foot of that's used for storage, so the way that's worded is a little...
Do you have a fabrication, um, spot now?
No, we don't, we, we're not even, that's something that we would want to do in the future. That's why it's important right now to see what we can and can't do, because that is something that we would like to do.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
Okay. Will?
So you're going to close down the office in Goodlettsville and move the entire company here? Will there still be an office in Goodlettsville?
No, there won't be an office in Goodlettsville.
Okay. Other questions? Do you have any more comments, ma'am?
I don't have any.
No? Okay, thank you. Does anyone else wish to speak for or against? Anyone else wish to speak for or against? Anyone else for or against? Before we close the public hearing? Okay, we'll close the public hearing. What's your wishes? Will?
Doug, if we were to approve this as presented, how many vehicles could they have? Seven? Is that what, or is there even a stipulation?
There's no limit currently on the vehicles. If you want it to limit the vehicles, you'd need to add that as a condition.
Now, I'm taking vehicles as people at the same time. Is there a limit to number of...
No, uh, currently, the conditions require a little bit of dedication of right-of-way, no storage of outside, outside storage, except for business vehicles, and then a landscaping plan being required to be submitted, are the current conditions. So if you want it to limit vehicles or employees, you'd need to add that to the motion.
Did we have four? Is that what it was, four? Did you say, well, it was four?
The neighbors out there said they wanted what they had in the past, that may be unrealistic. I don't know, it's a great big building, you know, it's five acres area, you can park five or six cars in it, I don't know if they'll know the difference, you know, but, like, the applicant before last, or in there somewhere, there was a company that was parking buses over there, transport van, vans, and all, and they covered it up with vehicles out there, it was getting, being a mess, and they just, they just don't want to see it go back to that type of structure.
The, the one approved in 2008 had a limit of five work-related vehicles on the property, and no heavy-duty commercial vehicles on-site at any time, was the limit that was on the previous one.
Did we have anything about no vehicles being left after hours?
No, just no heavy-duty vehicles is the condition.
She's wanting seven, huh? She's wanting seven?
Seven. I'll make a motion to approve with all staff comments, with a maximum of seven employee vehicles on-site at any time.
Does that rezon, conditional use or rezon?
I guess Mr. Demossi says to rezone, this is the proper thing. We've been kicking this thing around for years, let's at least get some rules in place, or we can get some landscaping up to standards and stuff like that, so that'll be as presented, as presented by staff.
Do I have a second?
Sir, aye.
Okay, do you have a question?
Yes, one question here on the fire hydrant. It's, uh, more than a mile away. Uh, I guess the Gladeville Utility District is...
They've got a ton of fire hydrant, don't they?
The, the water hotline can support a fire hydrant. It's currently not closed, but they can, and they would have to put in a fire hydrant for the commercial development.
Yeah.
Yeah.
And this would, would require a fire hydrant, the, via the regulations, yeah?
Okay, wouldn't require that. Okay. Okay, wouldn't require that. Okay. All right, we have a motion, a second to approve. All, all in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? No? He was aye, okay. Motion carries. All right, thank you. Do you need to come to the county commission?
This will be September the 50th.
In September, county commission, all right, okay. Okay, staff report?
I believe we had a request for suspension of the rules for a bond extension. We could have a vote to suspend the rules so we could have a bond extension added on to the agenda. That would be in order.
I have a motion, suspend the rules. Make, make a motion to have a second. All in favor of the motion, say aye. All opposed, no. Okay. Dale, you on Dale?
This request is an expense, to extend the bond on Creekside Estates. We tried to get in touch with the developer last month to get this in, and he was, didn't get to us until after our meeting. And so his bond expires on the 23rd. So we need to get, he's already working on getting the paperwork. We just need to get permission to get it extended for a year.
Okay. Do you have a motion? Okay, do you have a second? All in favor of the motion, say aye. All opposed, no. Motion carries. Dale, do you have anything else?
No, I don't.
Just a couple of brief items. You'll notice in your agenda packets that our zoning staff comments, we've kind of overhauled those, uh, thanks to the, the work for, for Ms. Emslie she did in, in preparing this. I know she did a lot of research into different staff comments, how they were prepared and everything. We just wanted to call attention to that to see if you guys had any, if you had any comments, if you prefer this, you know, just take a look on or if you have any comments, just let us know one way or the other. We think that this provides more information than what we were providing originally, does it in a, in a clear format and is, is a better format than what we were using originally. But I just wanted to call your attention to that and to the work that Ms. Emslie did on that. The other comment, we are, as you remember, at the last meeting, we talked about the tentative timeline for our zoning, providing our zoning, the draft of the revised zoning ordinance to you. As far as we know, we are still on target with that. We're diligently reviewing that even today and probably the rest of this week. So just try, if at all possible, try to be present at the next meeting because that's our target date to have that. If for some reason we can't, we'll let you know. But at this point, that is our target to have the first draft to you for a start review. And we'll have a small presentation at that, not a full-on presentation, but a, just a brief overview of the changes that were, are being proposed for that. That's all I have, Mr. Chairman.
In the next meeting or this?
Yes, the next, yeah, the next day meeting over in Meson.
What day is that?
That's the 22nd. Nine o'clock, yes, sir.
Any one else's comments? Need a motion?
No.
Do you have a second? Before we let motion say aye, thank you.